Okay, we're ready to go. Alright, so we've got a four, we've got three of us, right? We're gonna go.
Does anyone want to introduce themselves first?
What's that?
Introduce yourself, Jim.
I'm Jim Williams.
I'm Whitney.
Jerry Mitchell.
Carly Perry.
Suzanne Ann Grayson.
I'm Max.
I'm not doing it for them, I'm doing it for you.
Alright, so the workshop just discussed LD 2003. And actually, I think it's like whether, as far as like when the state house goes.
So, I spoke at the public comments period on, maybe with March 1st. And all the, all people who came out, pretty much during the public comments section, said how they just need more time. There's no way, given the size of the community, there's no way people are making this July 1st deadline. And they really need the state to step in to have a delay on this. And there are, there's two pieces of legislation in the works right now. Both in committee. One would delay implementing the legislation for two years. And then there's one that would delay implementation until, I think, October of this year. But the towns that would be, but then only towns of 10,000 or more would have implemented. So, Westpac would be excluded by that point. I don't know which one is going to be implemented. I'm thinking it's going to be the two-year one, because that gives towns all more time, and then it gives more time for amendments to it. But unfortunately, I don't know when we're gonna do that.
We don't know when they'll be voted on?
No. And I, my fear is that there's going to be the 11th power push, which then puts even more towns in a terrible spot. The ones who actually were doing their due diligence, and are now implementing these rules that are no longer required. There was one town who had just had their attorney write some stuff up, so they can gain compliance just in case. But they're trying to have some weird system in place, so they can not approve, so they can say, "Oh, we're voting to approve it, on the condition that this legislation actually is implemented on this day." It's, it's a weird thing that...
So, what town's wasting their money paying the lawyer to do all that to?
Well, unless they cover something that they haven't.
Yeah, oh yeah.
Yeah, then you're not...
They're preparing their ordinance changes, but they have to have everything ready by
the rules, because then it's gonna be a warrant. So, they're gonna have the land use changes, but there's gonna be a condition that the towns approving it, on the condition that LD 2003 will go into effect on July 1st.
Okay. And who's doing this to see?
This is a, no, this is just a community, the LD...
Oh, any community, okay.
Any community. I'll just leave this term out.
Okay.
That's one community's solution.
That's one community. Doesn't speak for what else.
Well, it's LD 214 that moves it ahead, restricts it to towns over 10,000.
Yeah.
And the sentiment on that is, right now, really, there's not much of a read on it. There's been no hearings scheduled.
Yep.
LD 665 has not had a hearing, a public hearing scheduled either, not even scheduled. So, we know we're out probably at least a couple months on that. And that's the one that Hepler, Representative Hepler proposed, us presented. And that was extended by two years. And she feels that it may, it may be a compromise to make to just extend it for a year. So, everything's kind of all over the place, and it is probably gonna be last minute, like you said.
Personally?
If there's anything.
Personally, I'm fine, even if it is just a one-year delay, because I think the problem we've had with LD 2003, at least from a regional council or community's perspective, the public hearing process has only just ended, so we don't even have a final draft. What we're gonna review tonight is just their first draft, pretty much.
Right. And, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it. So... So, even if it was extended for a year, that would be, and I guess the MMA is coming out for, in favor of extending it, that two years, and the LD extending it two years. The other one, the 10,000 or over population, they're not testifying either for it or against. At least that's the last reading, as of, well, a few hours ago.
And I think the main association of planners are also agreeing to that as well. They're just planners throughout the entire state, so there's not someone for every town, but at least the biggest towns.
Yeah. So...
Okay, so you worked on some definitions? You went through our, you wanna tell us?
I, I actually thought they were kind of self-explanatory, just, well, Darlene told me that you were working on the definitions for the last two or so weeks, so I didn't know if I had to spend the time doing that.
No, that's what our last workshop was, it was just definitions.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, do you have any questions on the definitions while I'm here? Or should we just skip ahead to the other changes that I wanted to provide?
Did we share our changes to the definition review?
Uh, I haven't.
Oh, she did, okay, she did her line, okay.
Yep.
I'm trying to think of the rest of the questions on.
By the way, I like the maximum footprint suggestion of height of 75% or 1,000 square foot. I think that's a good idea.
This isn't a rodeo, we know what we're doing.
So, when you say footprint, I guess the interpretation is that it'd be, you know, it could be two-story, it could be an half-story. So, the accessory unit could be bigger than the original?
Yeah, unless you put in the maximum size, like you did.
Right.
Right. But that is the maximum size of it.
It was 75% or 1,000.
Footprint and the 75%, that is the maximum, right, that we put in.
Was it either 75% or 1,000?
Right.
Either or.
That's a footprint, it's not square footage. On the 1,000.
Yeah, 75% of the...
Meaning, it could be two and a half story, I mean, it could be a, could be two and a half story garrison, for example.
Right. You might wanna put in maybe 75% as close footprint, or 1,000 square foot, whichever is lesser, or maybe give, kinda like how with shoreline zoning, they have that work, mountain flooring, these ones. Like, rather than the person gets to choose, the town gets to say, you just pick the lower one. That's just me throwing it out there, but you don't have to do that.
Yeah, I think we did both, to be less restrictive.
And that's one, that's the option.
To listen, proposal dictate which one they were gonna, were planning on using.
So, what are the towns doing on that?
Um, around 750 square feet is roughly the mountain though, 750, 800, because that's, that's about a mobile home right there, so that's...
So, that's a maximum size?
That's a maximum size.
Okay.
And whether they wanna go higher than that, so that they get more room, or they wanna go lower that, so that it's not another mobile home being put on there, that's up to the, the town to decide. But usually, they start making a decision around that, that footprint.
Alright, um... You guys wanna go with the rest of our definitions, or we all go with those? They probably tagged out afterwards.
I don't have any questions on those.
I'll say these.
Yeah. I mean, I went through them, I, I don't have any questions, I think that everything's pretty straightforward.
Yep. Alright, so then you got, this is, this is your next...
Yeah, so that was just me doing a quick rundown of...
Through our ordinance, right?
Yep.
So, page eight.
Is it, you just go to this, or eight in here? When you said eight, eight is a, did you print it in?
The ordinance.
The ordinance.
Okay.
Right, the ordinance.
When do we still want to move on?
And actually, I guess it's still some of the definitions.
It's beating me up.
Throughout your ordinance, you have an accessory temporary residential unit.
That guy's already back.
So, is that supposed to be the accessory apartment, or is that, before LD 2003 came into it, accessory temporary residential unit, was that always supposed to be like an accessory unit? Because it seems like it's only supposed to be a, there for a few years.
It's a five-year renewal, is it not?
Correct.
So, it's, so it's a, it's a temporary five-year commitment, and then you renew another five, and then you renew. That's, I think, the temporary element in that.
Okay.
This is specifically to address, like, in-law apartments?
Right.
Temporary housing.
But then, right. And I'm saying one of the problems is, now here comes accessory dwelling.
Right. So, do we want that?
Which I think the board agreed last time, was to remove that.
Right, because that's negated it.
Right.
It's antiquated now. You can just leave that language, can be taken all together.
The accessory temporary residential, yeah.
Once this goes into effect.
Right. Now, you could still have that renewal. You're still allowed to have standards and your own rulemaking process for these items, so you could still have this five-year item, or renewal item, for the accessory dwellings, if that's what you wanna do.
But wouldn't the dwellings be fixed structures? Like, so you're saying they would have to renew it?
Well, I, and hopefully I don't take up too much time, so how does the accessory temporary residential unit work exactly? Is this...
You remove your stove to make it not, I don't mean not level with the term, you have to, you have to take out the stove, the cooking.
I think it was intended to be dealing with, like, campers parks, or RVs, or...
Okay, so this is...
A shed, like, things that could be removed after a certain amount of time.
So, there is, there is something in town that, like, John's had to enforce, the five-year thing, and that they've been regular apartments above garages, and...
Oh, okay. So, it's sort of like a hardship thing for a family and a brother?
It could be a carrier, like, you have someone who's hired to assist your parent for as long as you need.
And that's okay, like, renting it to someone, a stranger would not be, that's why they...
And that's where removing the stove comes in. So, if you get the stove out, it's no longer levelable?
I gotcha, okay.
I think it's that, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, this was more of like a temp, it's not supposed to be renewed every five years, it's just more literally temporary until they get a more permanent dwelling structure, is that?
Well, I think it took like...
Or until someone passes, you could, like, it's like, it could be, it could be a nurse that's living, or a caregiver.
It's typically for someone's parent moves in with them, or end-of-life care, or something that's...
So, I guess how would you wanna deal with the difference between the two is up to you, then if you wanna think, uh, change the name, or just try and stress the difference between the two, it's up to you.
Or I think just eliminate, right?
Well, if this ever becomes an ordinance, this would then go away, because then you could take that structure and just, and make it permanent, and it's forever.
No point in having it.
The intent of this was so that people could have a secondary dwelling, but not as a rental unit. It would be for a family member, not income producing. But now, anyone can have a rental unit.
Right, so I think we would just eliminate.
So, you'll just find and replace accessory temporary dwelling and put an accessory dwelling unit?
Right.
Is that what the impression I'm getting?
Or eliminate some things, I think.
Just eliminate it all.
Now, do we, I don't think we, yeah, so I think we would eliminate, right?
What, once again?
Okay, Jay, we just eliminate the temporary, the, the fourth paragraph now.
Yep. This is six months, this is a completely different one. Where's the one that's renewed every five years?
Oh. Let me pull out the paper.
This is a temporary occupancy, there is a five-year one also. Do you want a paper copy, or do you prefer?
No, no, no. Maybe I just...
Oh, here it is. During the preceding five years.
What, what page?
So, the very last, um...
Oh, here.
Was this. Structure provided, and structure has been used as maintained as residential purposes during the five-year period. That was not before me, that's how it was, I worry.
I'm sorry, can I see the third one? Ah, yeah, okay. Yeah, I don't have it. Okay, I'm lost. Page eight. Okay, so just going through my notes, page eight, the plan board still wants to limit occupational permits to commercial, only despite changes from LD 2003, so, occupation.
So, that, maybe you're talking about the occupancy part, right, obviously?
Yes.
Yeah, I think...
That's the only facility we have is commercial.
Right.
Right. Right, following, yes, here we go, because at the top of page eight, number 10, occupancy/ use permit, following, must do commercial uses only, including those portions of the structure and/or property utilized for a new business. So, because this means someone can come in and start doing multiple dwellings on one property, do you still want to leave the occupancy permit only to commercial use?
I think we were gonna, we were gonna ask John, I think.
Yeah.
See if he, because I think that would really affect him a little bit, I guess, right, as far as his, his workload, whether we did occupancy permits. And I don't, I kinda don't think anybody would be in favor of, you know.
I don't think, though, it would help the consumer, though, if there was an occupancy permit required.
Yeah. And I, I agree with you 100%. The only problem is, I can see that that would turn John's job into, like, a whole, like, another, you know what I mean, like, huge, it would be a lot of work, right? And then we don't really have any codes, right? I don't know how that would work, because we don't really have the building code, right? We don't, we get to...
But I do think as a fire chief, he might be forward with these multifamily units. It might, he might be...
Well, but it's not a multi, as long as you have egress in that property, I don't, we don't even enforce that now, you've got, you can have a door to nowhere, and that's still acceptable.
No, but this would just give us, you know, at the end of the train, so to speak, after everything has been built and constructed, before people started moving in, to just ensure that, you know, that things have been done the way that they're supposed to be done, you know, so. And there's something in the LD 2003 about having occupancy permits?
You're allowed to create occupancy permits for these.
Oh, okay.
So... Maybe you go for no accessory dwellings.
You know, I assume this would only be one time after, you know, at the end of construction?
Yep.
So, it would ensure that things have been constructed the way they were supposed to be, that there were certain safety things in place for the fire escapes and so forth, I think.
But how would you do that, where we don't have a building code, right? We don't really have a...
We don't have, would it default to the state building group at that point? There's, there's, that doesn't come into play until we have 2,000 residents, and we go to that. We're gonna be forced to have that, once we get to 2,000 residents, we go to a whole new level of code and enforcement.
You're at 1,900 or so, aren't you?
We don't, we've got a gate up now.
Yeah. Come on, I'm doing your conference.
So, but it's, but that, I mean, it's, that will come over time, but it's, it takes, we do a whole new jump, once we get to that.
What were you gonna say?
I just look at it as it applies to our ordinance, that's already be looking at, an occupancy permit, but the, you know, there's only one, I'm saying that.
I got you.
That's all I...
I got you.
And you don't have to say commercial and residential, you could just say, "Commercial uses only," and, uh, once you, like, more than two dwelling units on the same park or something, you know, something specifically that would be LD 2003 focused?
Yeah, that'd be good.
You know, that way, it's not every resident who wants to do the one home plus their accessory has to get a certificate of occupancy. It's someone who, uh, maybe they're gonna be in the growth area, and they're gonna put up four dwellings, day one, they have to get a certificate of occupancy.
So, I think my only question, Jim, would be, if it's only gonna be like the zoning and the setbacks and stuff in our code, like, if they wouldn't be able to really pull a building permit from John, right, theoretically, if it didn't meet that already?
It just means at the end, he'd, he'd have to make sure it's been done, right, that the setbacks and all those things have been done.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's, there's also gonna be so many elements that lead to that, that your subject's gonna be upgraded, your well's gonna be, there's, as you start to add, so that's gonna come to light as you, as these accessory dwellings are...
Yeah, all good things sort of, I'm sure that they would be.
Overall, I think that's the conversation to have with the code enforcement, or I just wanted to flag that point.
So, I wrote down the last one. Okay. Alright, page 21.
This is where we get to your, yes, it is where we get to your table uses. The first one is just me being a bit picky, just to include something that clarifies that blank meaning, it's just not allowed at all, or something like that. That's just me being a bit picky. That's not in LD 2003, I think that's just me.
Oh, so you mean, like, what we just said, just say now?
Yeah, like, put it in there, or just even say under page 20, you know, if a use listed in the table of uses, that the P is permitted, uh, if it's left blank, that means it's not permitted, you know?
Okay.
Again, that's just a minor item for me, it's not...
Go to page 34, item 12.
34, um...
That's your accessory dwelling unit explanation.
Oh, yeah, no, I saw that, and that's why I was curious how it...
That's your five-year term expires without a rule, that's...
Yeah, no, I, that's why I was curious how this is gonna play into it, once you have the accessory dwelling unit. Actually, yes. Yeah.
I didn't mention that?
Yeah, I have that note on page 34 on my notes.
Okay, so, alright, page 21, will you?
Yeah, well, we'll go through all those items. And, yeah, I guess for accessory temporary residential unit, your land use charts, I guess you're either getting rid of it, or you're going to just put accessory dwellings instead. I'll just note that I have it flagged. And then there should be page 22, uh, multifamily, LD 2003 has it at three or more dwellings, you had that four.
Oh, yep. Item 6.
Okay. I'd be curious, honestly, why was, why is it four dwellings? Was it just another, that's...
Real estate four or more units is considered multifamily, in a traditional real estate transaction.
Okay. And, uh, me putting in the, I knew not to exceed eight dwellings, again, that was just me more curious than anything, so it's not really, uh, not gonna have to be addressed.
Okay, um, let's see.
And then, the other question I had, while we were talking about residential, was elderly housing. I feel the last time, kind of here or somewhere else, uh, we were talking about incentives for elderly housing, and there was, I think, an individual in the audience who was raising points about it.
So, it's age discrimination.
Yeah, does, is there any separate rules or anything for elderly housing, or...
There's not, there's many states that have elderly housing. It does not consider the age.
No, I, I meant more like, specifically in this town, is there anything, like, some towns would just say, an elderly facility only has to find one parking space per unit, rather than two?
We don't have any specific 55 and older community, or anything like that, yet.
No standards? No, hold on, right here, elderly housing that includes assisted living facilities, that's, uh, that's permitted differently from page 23.
Which number is that?
Eight, number 10, elderly housing that includes assisted living services, congregated care services, nursing home services, or hospital services, without restriction on the number of dwellings per structure.
That's permitted in all home, in business commercial, not in residential.
Can't remember, skipped that one. I was so focused on just going through your residential table, I think it's the institutional.
So, do you have a recommendation on that?
Um... I mean, you allow them to, I think we're, and it's probably gonna be more for when I have to read it over, and it's anyways, but it's complicated, though.
Think that can, um...
Yeah, this might just be something to file with our residential instead, but I don't, I mean, you're just saying that, no restrictions on the dwellings there.
But it's not permitted in residential right now, which is kinda odd, but...
Mobile home and business commercial. Right.
I think we'll hear the traffic, yeah.
Maybe, I don't think you have to, I don't believe you need to do anything on this one. If you feel like you wanna do something, I would just, not even say elderly housing, just leave us a, um, nursing facilities, or nursing home facilities, congregated care...
Or assisted living.
And assisted living.
I want you to say housing, I'm just saying about more elderly, elderly, how they include assisted living services.
Well, I think we get, this, again, I don't think you have to worry about this one. You're, you have it in the home, and you have that business commercial.
Alright, that's moved it?
I think it's fine, I have this. The next one I have is on page 32. This is after we've gone through all of your land use standards. I just said that, uh, this isn't really a required item, but this was me just going to the end of the, but for B2, it seems like it's more of a footnote than anything for, for Article 3A standards. Just because it starts going through minimum lot size requirements. Yeah. But I think you're fine, by the way. It's, again, just me being, uh, ignoring, uh, location. And... I gotta be back. And on page 30, I forgot that. Just make, just make sure, somewhere between 30 and 32, you stress that it's the lot size per dwelling unit. Because once we do have to get, because once someone does wanna do a dwelling unit, they have to do it per lot size, if you specify that. But if you just say, let's say, one acre, uh, yeah, one acre in the high-density shoreline zones, then if you only require, if it's one acre, just one acre for lot size, they only need to do one acre for multiple ones, but if you're stressing it's per unit, they have to provide that one acre per unit. If any of that makes sense.
In, in, in this new LD 2003?
Yeah, you have the guidance documents, would you correct? Can I see that?
Sure.
So, just stress somewhere that the lot size is per dwelling.
So, would you, uh, expect an updated version of that?
I think, is this supposed to be the updated version?
Wouldn't you, okay.
Before our last, before our person?
Yeah, I think this one's actually one third one, although I don't know if they replaced rulemaking with, uh, preferred rulemaking with...
There's a concern in there.
Here you go. Yeah. So, this is what, just for the folks at home, in case anyone's curious. So, what's permitted, when you're saying, uh, lot area per dwelling unit, is they still have, if you have a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet, they still will have to provide 10,000 square feet for each unit that's gonna be built there. But if you don't have a lot size per dwelling unit, they can legally look at it as, "Oh, well, I have my 10,000 for the lots, so I don't have to do it for each dwelling unit."
So, if you have a two, you have a three-acre zone minimum, per house? Then how does this?
Right, it doesn't do that, yeah, right.
It doesn't sit in there, ever. You'll never have it, unless you've got six acres.
Which is the code now, I guess.
Right. So, if you have, if it is one, a three-acre lot size?
Yep.
For building, then we don't have a structure on, huh? You can have one in structure in that three acres.
Right, because you've made the law, right?
So, my zone, the zone I'm in, it's two acres.
Yep.
And so, I cannot have an accessory dwelling, right now, unless it's a hardship case.
Until LD 2003 goes into effect.
Right, but what you just said, what you just showed...
He'd have to have four acres.
Right.
That's for regular dwellings. Accessory dwelling units are exempt, like, the first accessory dwelling is exempt.
So, then in this case, you would have, as long as you've got setback and well, on a 10,000 square foot lot, you can still put an accessory dwelling, if you meet all the other criteria?
Yes, and that's why I stress the words of getting that maximum size.
Lot size. Lot size.
Because, because someone will ju- you could just build something far bigger and say, well, it's exempt from the lot size because it's an accessory. LD two thousand three is on top because of it.
So for the first dwelling unit, for the first accessory unit.
It's exempt.
The rules are exempt other than meeting septic and water.
For accessory, for accessory.
Accessory dwelling. But in the second unit, it's not.
Well, you have, you have to permit one accessory dwelling, you don't have to permit multiple accessory dwellings on lots. So, yeah, the one accessory dwelling.
Everyone can compare that to one acre dwelling, regardless of their lot size.
And that will be exempt from the parking requirements, from the lot size requirements. And if you want for anymore, you can, but then it starts having additional lot size items. Are we gonna say something?
No, I don't, I don't get it, but I'm tired of the board's time because I haven't researched this later.
Yeah, I can talk more after the meeting if you want to. Again.
I need like, I need an LD two thousand three tutor.
I'm here, don't we all?
Yeah, I'm here.
That's what we hear.
But everyone else, yes.
No, that's necessarily, no, no, no.
Now, the way everyone, the accessory unit is, the first accessory dwelling unit waves a parking requirement. So if you require one parking space for every dwelling, then the accessory dwelling would be exempt.
This would be your parking example?
Yes.
So you have not permitted,
Yeah.
permitted and permitted, so you have two versus two to three, you don't, you don't have, you're not required to add the, the third car.
We don't have parking requirements now, do we?
No.
Yes.
Well, but this, the multifamily, there's a unit, in the two thousand three, there's a multifamily item that says, it's one per four units, one parking space, which is gonna create a huge debacle.
Two for three.
Two for three, so you, and we can't make them have one for every unit.
Right.
That's, I think, a huge.
The max is saying this says to what, accessory dwelling.
No, that's applicable for the regular dwelling units. But if you're only, if we're only talking about accessory dwelling, that page doesn't matter. Cause they're, the first ones are, but if this is the regular, more than a thousand square foot accessory, more than a thousand square foot dwelling, it has to still meet the lot size minimum.
Whatever, so you couldn't, you couldn't build a second home right now, Jerry? You couldn't because you only have two acres, you have a second, you have to have four acres. But as an accessory dwelling, it would have.
As long as you make sure it says somewhere in page thirty to thirty-two, as long as you mention somewhere that it's minimum lot size.
Per dwelling.
Per dwelling, yes.
You have to, I think we need to add that. Add.
We need our.
You had to chart thirty.
And that's, that's why I was thinking with B two, that might be better as a footnote instead. Cause it say, it does say right here, more than one residential dwelling is constructed on a single parcel, the minimum lot size of the project shall be met for each dwelling. So that's why I'm saying maybe move B two.
To A.
To.
Article three.
Right.
And he's saying add to, add to the chart on page thirty.
Well, no, I just changed that to say lot size per unit, or just moved this B two item as a footnote instead.
Or not, enough, okay.
Item one would probably be a good idea.
But at least have something that says.
Yeah, so how about adding another, uh, spreadsheet similar to like what we have for district road fronts and so forth, that applies to.
LD two thousand three?
Right.
Well, and lot, lot, and then regular lots, and then LD two thousand three, so you've got.
Can we, can, can we do something like that?
Yeah.
Cause this, this really does explain like a complex situation very easily in the spreadsheet. You know, it takes the setbacks and lot sizes and so forth. If we could do that for an ADU and.
But once, once LD two thousand three is inactive, it's kind of irrelevant.
It is inactive.
Well, in, in force.
Implemented.
Implemented.
Yes.
Um, once it's, cause once we, once you can have the accessory dwelling unit, your lot size becomes irrelevant.
Right. I'm looking at to where people are gonna be trying to understand our ordinance.
Right.
Uh, that's, that's, that's why I asked the question about, can we develop a chat like this, that we can insert into our ordinance that would, uh, deal with the accessory dwelling unit, whereas, you know.
So.
And so forth, either as an add-on to this one, uh, this spreadsheet, uh, or a rule.
So I think that answer might be later on, I sent up, just like.
Okay.
A rough idea that I have where it does go through, like accessory dwelling, it's specifically talks about setbacks and international requirements. And maybe that's where you could have your chart and show the difference. But the accessory dwelling is only supposed to, unless you want to allow lots throughout to have more, it's only supposed to be one accessory dwelling unit.
Per lot.
For the lots, and that's the maximum that you can have unless you permit more, so.
So then for each, for each high density shoreline residential, residential, mobile home, back, you know, UTP.
Yep.
It would say accessory dwelling unit one one.
Yeah, I mean, I specify in the specific items later on that there shall be more parking. Well, you can add, let's see, not more than one accessory apartment will be developed within the lot. So that's what you could point.
On any lot.
On any lot, yeah.
Whether it's a one acre, two acre, three acre.
And you can obviously massage apartments if you'd like. But for this item we're talking about, minimum lot size per units, the B two language you have on page thirty-two, that's the one I emphasized, I may just make that for.
And moving in that, you think will be sufficient to set the standard for lot size per dwelling?
Yes.
Do you understand what I was saying?
So, yeah.
So we're gonna move B two on page thirty-two.
Yeah, and just make this footnote number eighteen instead.
Yep.
Okay. So much time to discuss things there.
Page sixty-four, is that the next one?
Yeah. No, thirty-four. Oh, let's keep going, I guess. Uh, yeah, and this is going over the temporary accessory residential, but we've gone through that quite a bit already.
So this is, this is just gonna go away once it's inactive? Yes, no?
I, yeah, I, that's what I wanted to know about from the client board.
Well, there's no point in having temporary, you can have.
Community permanent. Why, why do you do it every five years, it makes sense forever?
Yes, I mean. We just get rid of it, right? Figure thirteen would just disappear.
Well, twelve is the one that goes away.
Oh, right, I'm sorry.
And then, I have for, I say, number fourteen, or making the separate section that goes over these LD two thousand three requirements, whether, you could take the, five-ish pages that I wrote up, and you could insert them into page thirty-four, or for residential accessory use standards.
Oh, so just make number fourteen this?
Yeah, number fourteen would, well, number fourteen would be the wastewater item, uh, and then, and then I can, I can change the language if you want, so that it just fits more into this one, rather than creating a different section entirely for residential units. That would be applicable for LD two thousand three. Because if that happens, if I'm just moving this to thirty-four, then we don't need to make a whole change, we could just leave B two where it is.
No, that makes sense to me, what's it, what do you think? So I would, it says, I would include number fourteen, I guess I'm lost.
Yes.
Or create fourteen.
You, you could have another document here, in the staple, on here, it's in your staff right here.
And I think anyways, that's gonna be down. And I think that's actually supposed to be the next item. Yeah.
This is it.
Yeah, because.
Right on that, becomes page thirty-four, number fourteen. This whole series always becomes its own heading.
Well, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, I make sure it's numbered properly for the sheet question. So I take it that's the direction you want, you just want this to be placed in the residential.
Don't you guys think? Yeah, I think. It would be a lot of us trying to decipher, you know, if you gotta change, right? So these would all be sub paragraphs of fourteen.
No, the fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, each.
Yeah, so for example, um, maybe this water, wastewater with the number fourteen, and it, because what's gonna happen, the accessory dwelling, uh, affordable housing projects, and the dwelling allowance items, they all have the same requirements for water and wastewater, so I would just make wastewater number thirteen, fourteen, whatever it would be.
Okay.
And then just insert setbacks, mention requirements, and just continue adding on those numbers. So this would be fourteen, this would be fifteen, this would be sixteen.
On page thirty-four.
This is on the residential and accessory use standards, okay.
Yeah.
So the last one, number, you know, uh, number five, the last one in your sheet.
Yeah.
You'll explain that to me.
The short-term rental?
That would work, I mean, that, that's fine, I mean, perhaps you could go into our audience and knock it up and then we can, we can see how it's gonna.
I'll show you.
We don't have a short-term rental ordinance.
Yeah, no, and that's why it's there, just, it's a completely optional one, downs, I've just thrown that out there and downs, have either said yes or no, or wanted to go into discussion. This is just saying that if someone can do four units, say in the business commercial or whatever, broke areas there, then two of them can be short-term rentals, but the other two can't, that's all it says. Just because that's sort of the figure.
So only in the multifamily, or in all accessory dwelling units?
In, in all dwelling units that are being created under this.
So if you add one accessory dwelling unit.
Yep.
You can't rent it for short-term?
Uh, no more than fifty percent, so if it's just my one unit and.
One accessory?
And one accessory, the accessory could be a short-term, because that's only fifty percent.
So you can't rent both your house and the accessory, if you can only rent one?
Right, but it's a very, very, very bare minimum item in case a town is worried that all these units are gonna be built and it's just gonna be short-term rentals, but.
Yeah, doesn't seem like an issue.
If it's not an issue, then.
And I think there'd create more havoc in the town by putting that in there.
Well, the issue is that apartments are being converted from long-term to short-term rentals, cause it's more lucrative for the landlords.
And so.
In, in South Pauline and other towns, so that's why they stuck these, but then in there, about the fifty percent.
Well, no, no, I, I, that was mine, that, that's an optional item, you do not have.
Oh, okay, I thought it was something in LD.
In LD two thousand three, it says towns can create short-term rental ordinances, but the, but the state was smart enough not to.
They just can't do it.
You can do it.
Okay.
You can do it, but we're not gonna put anything together for short-term rentals, even though that's contributed to this.
Yeah.
So.
I think that would create havoc.
I only have that two sentence item, if a town wants to do the bare minimum and blame someone for short-term rentals, but you do not have to have.
I feel like that would create much more havoc for John, because we'd be the vacation police.
Airbnb police.
Yeah. You are here only ten days.
Right, I've been, I've been here for a week now.
And with another seasonal people anyway.
Yeah, just careful, I drive hard.
Right.
Like a donation.
So. Yeah, the tip jar.
But everything else is something from LD two thousand three, and so that is what I would just shift from.
Yeah.
Page thirty-four, of course, but I'll take out short-term.
So you're gonna take that?
Yeah, number five removed, and then the rest of the items would just be. Yes, well, sixty-five is when we start getting into this five page document, I guess, so these were just gonna be added on to the end of the. It's actually required, yeah. Uh, but before we get to that, there's just one more item, page seventy-five.
Can we just go back to this for a second, I think that's.
Oh, yeah, no, sure, go ahead.
But, uh, under the item, Thomas parking, you know, two, two spaces per three units.
Oh, yeah.
What's been the discussion in other municipalities and so forth about that, especially ones similar to us that, you know, we don't have parking meters on streets with parking spaces and all, we don't have that. And so where are the, where are the people gonna park?
Uh, that's the, the response, that's the same question everyone asks me, where's everyone gonna park? And I show them, so I don't have an answer for that.
Especially if a town has no public transit.
I think this was written, that item was written for a city that has no transit and people don't have one car per unit.
Well, the whole thing was modeled after Portland's study, right?
Yep, so that's not, I mean, that would not function in West Bath, because it's, we have no transit here.
So what are, what are, I mean, what are other towns, you know, what are their thoughts on how to deal with that? I mean, just kinda like.
They can't, but we can't enforce anything more strict or less, less strict.
You could do a traffic ordinance to say you're parking on the street, okay.
Which the sheriff department has made very clear that they will not enforce in West Bath, in West Bath.
Well, we don't have one, certainly can't enforce it.
Let's see how it goes with that ordinance expanding.
I guess, outside of that, I hope a developer makes a deal with the Bath or Brunswick transit system.
We just don't have any clear, we don't have any of that going on here.
So if someone came before the board and they presented something, could we, I guess, informally request or ask them if they would provide a parking spot for everybody?
You can.
You can't ask them to?
You, you can ask, you can ask, but if they say, no, I don't wanna do one spot for me, that I'm only required to do two per three, and.
But anyone who's gonna buy there is not going to live there, they can't have a car. If everyone has it, and that's gonna be a deterrent, I'm not gonna be able to rent it if they're like, you can rent here for two hundred a month, but.
You can't have a car.
Well, and I'm not, and I, I'm belaboring to the whole ordinance you have here, so I don't know if you have a criteria like, uh, traffic safety or anything like that, but, you know, that's something you could refer to and say, yeah, that's the minimum, but we still wanna make sure these people can rent. So how do I even do that?
So we've requested that they can say, thanks for your request, but.
They don't have to.
They don't have to, and then it's up to you to decide if that's still, um, following whatever criteria we have on traffic.
We can see an accident happening here, we can see it, we can see that car crash.
It's worse, I can see.
We can see this problem coming, it's.
Oh, a hundred percent, or fighting over it.
So you can still ask for more information from them about how are you gonna get people around, how this is gonna happen, how that's gonna happen, and how you're doing the safety. That's still in your powers, the planning board, you can still ask for all that information. And if you're not satisfied, you can still deny it, because you still want to see how they're willing to get people around.
But we don't, if we don't have an ordinance that requires safety, we can't make that one builder have safety.
Right, and that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying, I'm not a hundred percent sure what powers you do have, but that's one of your review criteria.
We don't have one, I don't believe it requires safety in parks.
I have to.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So when the land use ordinance, is there a way to, put language in there as a setback from the road that cars can park in? So that when someone comes and says, well, where are these people gonna park, they can't just say, oh, on the side of the road, because that would be against our ordinance.
Could you put.
But I guess there's no parking requirement anyway, so I guess that doesn't even matter.
So I'm sorry, can you repeat the question?
I know what you're saying with it.
I was just wondering how we could work into the land use ordinance, disallowing people from parking on the side of the road.
How, can you have a mandatory visitor parking, what could then accommodate that? Can you add a mandatory visitor parking to the, so that's how you get around it? You only have, so you only have to have two parking spaces for three units, but you could say you must have a visitor parking lot available.
You have to be careful with how you phrase the whole thing, but, but yeah, um, because we're talking about multifamily dwellings specifically. Affordable isn't gonna be for these people who are building four units in the growth area, this is affordable, this is the multifamily units, which, I think if I read your incorrectly, it's only gonna be two or three spots in town, right?
Mobile home and business commercial.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so it's just those. Yeah, so it's just those two areas, um, and where is that? That's like Route One State Road?
Yeah.
So.
You don't just park at the ice cream shop.
What's that?
Just park at the ice cream shop.
I'm sure the person who owns the ice cream shop.
Trisions.
In the road.
I swear I'm gonna fight this thing.
There was one spot that was really relaxed.
Well, I would think this is, you know, this is something that, you know, I mean, this is, this is from our corrupt world may, I mean, it's gotta be somebody in the planning office that's thinking about a fix for that.
I think, like Suzanne said, I think people are gonna.
No one's gonna buy it, if these, because these are available, buy or occupy a place that they can't have their own vehicle.
Sure, sure, there'll be one or two people that will not have the parking, but for the most part, I think, like, someone's gonna. Yeah, it increases the value.
Right.
Or, or, you know, you're also, you know, in Portland, you have parking garages and monthly permits and things that you can accommodate a vehicle that may not be at your house but close by, that, I mean, we just don't have that here.
So. Two things, one, this is why I said earlier, the developer, why would just hopefully not come to town because there's not gonna be a spot for every single person? Or because this is State Road and, uh, Route One, they might just reach out to this Bath Transit System and say, hey, I wanna do this development, any chance we can get your bus to come by? And then that's how I can get people to go around without using a car. I don't know, that would have to be a very big adjustment on them, but.
Yeah.
Uh, and then to your que, your earlier question, I started the whole thing of setbacks and everything, we might be able to work something on, uh, item ten on page thirty-four. There shall be off-street parking for these two cars for dwelling units. Uh, the language will have to be expanded anyways to address the accessory dwellings and everything. But maybe we could include in there that, well, it says off-street parking anyways.
Right. Well, and not necessarily, I guess that question wasn't necessarily to try and circumvent the parking issue, but just to address like the safety concerns brought up, like if people are parking on the street.
And maybe that's what you can include, like no development shall have, uh, on-street parking or shall accom, or shall.
Or must accommodate.
Or must accommodate or anticipate overflow or something like that.
Visitor, visitor access or something.
So we, we could put something in that one specifically that talks about on-street parking just not being acceptable or the planning board having discretion on that type of thing. So that's an option.
You said off, off-street pa, on-street pa.
On-street parking would be, face a little more, maybe.
Would it be allowed or something?
But we have it allowed, because it says there shall be off-street parking for at least two cars for a dwelling on one street.
On-street parking, so might be another item we create that just.
About one street.
On-street developments that, but on-on-street parking or something else will have to be required for this and that.
That'd be good. At least they're trying to address that, uh, that problem.
I mean, could we, so like in that diagram that you were showing with the.
Parking?
Yeah.
Parking. Yeah.
Yeah, could it be that?
Yeah, I think it's gonna.
Like we couldn't approve.
I feel that way.
I don't think that.
Yeah, who cares about that?
Yeah, I mean, so could it be something where you're saying that, all right, this is permitted, but you have to designate one of the two spots to be for the dwelling unit?
Yeah.
You can do that. Okay, so then that would be a way.
Cause it may.
Around it, right?
Say it again?
So, right now, if you require two cars per dwelling unit, but the suggestion is, and this would work, if someone is making the accessory dwelling unit, you can say, all right, you can have your accessory dwelling unit, you don't have to create any parking space, but of the two units you're already required to have, one of those has to be for the accessory dwelling, the other one will be for the single family, and that works.
And then they'd be incentivized if they want two parking, parking spots to put another one on for themselves, if not for their.
Yeah, yeah, that works.
So we, do we have to put language in?
Yes.
To do that, okay.
But, but the problem is, that, that would work for that scenario, but when you have a multifamily, like, your multifamily is three units, two parking spaces, so.
Yeah, that's a different mess.
You'll have two cars per unit that's allowable. And the, and the thing around that would be, you know, to cre, um, that you must have visitor overflow parking. You're not calling it mandatory parking, but you must have a visitor overflow lot.
Yeah.
To accommodate.
And, uh, oh, no, I guess this is more of the facilities.
Something we're gonna have to deal with.
Would that be legal to require a visitor overflow lot?
Yeah, 'cause they're talking only about dwellings, they're not talking about.
Guest parking.
Guest parking.
So guest parking, not that we have.
But it's the nice, it's the nice, I'll say that.
You could, you, we have to have a place for guests.
I know.
That, so that, that would be, a visitor overflow lot must be created that accommodates one car per three units, which then it gives you a one-to-one ratio.
For what car?
For three units, 'cause you already have two cars per three units, you need to get that other one car, so now each unit gets one car per parking.
How do you decide to give the exact details?
But you don't, that just gives you a full car per unit.
So why don't you take this, all of this back and come back with some type of proposal for us?
Yep.
And I'm sure other rural towns are, you have the same conversations. And you'll probably be happy with them.
See, we just need to really go to the overflow lots.
Yeah.
Go to each town, which everyone comes up with the best solution.
That's what we do.
We are the best.
They got a free ice cream cone.
That's us.
Just so I can, I usually have them on, but I think Lawrence might just have them.
I have a scan, I'm gonna keep that in the duration.
He's a giver. That's the accessory dwelling.
So.
It's invisible, like.
Okay.
But I think a visitor overflow is a way to do it.
And hopefully, yeah, I mean, for the most part, I think our laws are all pretty big. Yeah, I think.
Well, it's not necessarily for us, it's, I don't ever think it's gonna be an issue here, but I could see it being an issue in a, in a more densely populated town like Portland. We, we personally have two cars per unit, or just two, three cars per unit.
That is not a serious problem, I think, because they won't have any cars and not requiring parking. Yeah, but there's all, I mean, where you would put to, that, somebody, because you're not allowed a room for some accessory dwelling there either, though. I mean, they're, they're, you would not need setback.
You'll start seeing like people in basements and stuff happen, for, you know, the city, the U S, and all that stuff.
There'll be a parking garage that's created, which will make my brother, who works at the I D, very happy.
They need it.
All right, Joseph's up. Um, so I think for the rest of the whole. Oh, yeah, so just very quickly before we get back to the.
Page seventy-five?
Yes, page seventy-five, what did I have here? Um.
I have it for all.
B one, gee. Oh, yes, it says here, the planning board shall insert land use ordinance in the developer review ordinance, and then you list the reef, the item. I would say conclude something for multifamily dwelling units, so like you cover multifamily as well as the affordable housing projects.
Oh, G, to add G to it, okay.
Yeah, good.
We're halfway done, we're getting our ordinance, yeah. We're done.
Is that what I said? So I said, sorry, I'm trying to.
We're almost there.
So, all right, so we're good with this, everybody? All set with this?
Yeah.
I was just gonna ask Max, go ahead.
Oh, no, you can go ahead first.
I was just gonna ask, now, when are, when are you gonna be done with the comp plan? Ever?
Yeah, wow, soon, actually.
All right, I should say, when do you, when do you, what are comments working?
I'm crossing my fingers that we're gonna be done with the comp plan in June or release the staple, give us a thumbs up, that we can get town approval by June or July.
We have to submit it to the state, once we have our version then, which is very close, we're always done with our version.
Yeah.
But then it gets sent to the state for approval.
Yeah.
And we don't know when we get it back.
Yeah, they'll take it in two months.
Or not.
Or not. It depends on the work that they get. So I'm hoping by June or July, the comp plan will get the thumbs up from the state, and then you guys just have to do a town vote to approve it. And I don't really have to wait until the comp, I don't have to wait till the comp plan's approved and approved to start with.
So what we, but what, so what we might wanna do in that, because we, knowing that we're gonna have to have a special town meeting beyond our town meeting on May sixteenth to, to do the comp plan. We should, if, if L D two thousand and three is enacted July first, we should at least have what we can come up with for our implementation that's sent to Sally for review, so that's something that we can then also, any ordinance needs, has to be voted at a public meeting as well. We can do the comp plan and L D two thousand and three added to our ordinance and any other things that were minor tweaks that we talked about tonight, so that we can, because that's something that, if, if, if it is enacted, so we should then wait and vote on L D two thousand and three, the comp plan, and some minor adjustments in the ordinances to start, and then he'll, we'll have another town meeting to approve the ordinances once they're reviewed. Does that make sense?
And pretty much once I send it off to the state, I have to wait a few months anyways for them to give us the notes back, so I can start working on the ordinance at that point.
Now, when you start working on the ordinance, you, you sit, you, you stay at like your office and just start going through pages and see things that you don't think make sense.
Uh, yeah, I mean, what I would do is, I would be reading your ordinance. Well, first, I would wanna hear what, from you specifically, what you want me to keep an eye out for, and what changes you wanna see.
Parking spaces.
What did you say?
Parking spaces.
There you go.
One for every.
Parking spaces. Sorry, yeah. Um, so I hear that, if there's anyone else you would recommend, whether it's a.
We've got a running list of, and it has entire.
We do, we, we have stuff that we are ready to.
Yep.
Change.
So things like that, I'd quickly ask the select board and the town staff as well if there's just anything you've heard from re, just residents who are disconnected from the planning board, you know, what changes or what things they would like to see? And then I would start going through page by page and seeing what redundant items are there, so I can get rid of it, try and make sure references all make sense, and maybe try and change the way, you know, it looks like, to me, I like the number system where it's not one A, one I, A, Y. It should be one, 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 one.
One point one, one point two, one point three.
Yeah.
Love it. I have some, can I? Are you still on my, I have some attachments.
Yeah, sure.
So the changes that we've talked about tonight, you're gonna plug those in?
Yes.
And make those changes?
I'll make, I'll plug them into page thirty.
Okay, and we have a workshop schedule for next Thursday. Are the changes gonna be available?
Thursday?
I mean, next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Okay.
Um.
Tuesday, Thursday, whatever, easy.
I can.
That too ambitious?
Actually, no, I was just changing the numbers. No, I can have that, right? What, what's, like, do you send everything out this Friday or Thursday?
I mean, if it's not available to review until the meeting, then it's not available to review until the meeting.
I should be able to have it done Thursday. And then I'll send it to you.
Followed question.
I am not gonna be here next Tuesday.
That wasn't my question.
Okay.
Um, because our land use is all encompass, encompassing and includes shoreline, does this have to go to the state for a review?
No, but that does raise a good point, I, did I include it in here? So, one thing that I will have to make sure is included. Yeah. One thing I will have to include in here is just mentioning that the maybe it'll just be a different number, it's gonna, it's gonna be a weird random word. But pretty much L D two thousand and three is applicable to the shoreline zone?
Is or isn't?
Isn't. So like, if.
I thought it was the way you still have to meet all the requirements.
It is applicable, you have to meet the requirements and setbacks. You can't go closer to the water.
Right, well, no, for example, I'm, and I'll confirm it. Um, like in your growth area, near the, um, near the border with Brunswick, if you were in the shoreline zone there, you can't have four units there, you still can only have one single family lot.
So like New Beddoes River.
Right. Right, you can still.
That was probably the Zaccodan project.
What's that?
And New Beddoes, but, you know, New Beddoes River was that guy who came in with the. Sixteen. But that, that is a contact, that was.
Right, L D two thousand and three is applicable to shoreline.
So anywhere within, excuse me, within two hundred and fifty feet of the water, this, none of this will apply.
You sure?
Are you sure? Because that, that would make this project more.
Because this is one of our basic questions that we're here on. Does it mean that it applies only?
Do you have the state guidelines, or not the guidance documents, the, um.
The other?
Yeah, no, because this was something D E P was.
We've ignored my doubts on it.
Yeah, no, I remember I did that.
And the highlight.
That was something that D E P wanted to make sure was included, because they were, they took the thing, wasn't included in the beginning.
Because I think L D two thousand and three does say, it doesn't apply in the shoreline zone. So to me, that means two hundred and fifty feet from the water.
Right.
So if you're looking, if you do put, if I have a lot that's four hundred feet deep onto water, I can put a house, but it has to be back more than two, accessory dwelling, but it has to be more than two hundred and fifty feet.
Ha. Uh. Yes, here we go. Uh, you're looking at the rulemaking?
Please, it's right here.
Uh, yeah, page two, just before the definition.
Page two, just.
This is two.
Several.
C. Yes, two C, these rules do not exempt an affordable housing development, a dwelling unit or accessory dwelling unit from the shoreline zoning requirements established by the main D C D's pursuant to the, and municipal shoreline zone. So, these rules mean that they still have to follow your shoreline rules. So if you're saying you're shoreline, you can't do this, and that, you have to have all these, you still can enforce that.
So. So again, the way I'm.
You're reading.
Hearing you is that all of this accessory dwelling, et cetera, won't apply in that two hundred and fifty foot zone.
As long as you make that clear, yeah.
Well, let's, I mean, if that's our, if that's what we want, then yes, let's make it clear.
And I'll confirm it with, um, I'll confirm. I'll con, I go confirm it. I can't, I'm, I'm, it's not even eight, I will confirm it with, um, main D C D's housing people, all this who've made up the, who wrote up the rules, and I'll see if I can contact, um, the attorney that I've been talking with, L D two thousand and three.
I mean, uh, my first look on this, I mean, that would be too bad not to be able to do that in the shoreline area, but I'm just trying to.
But what would, I don't know what it would stop to, but explain to me how it would stop any.
The second dwelling within two hundred and fifty feet of water. Right?
Yeah, but as long as you're meaning, they're not going towards the water.
No, it says it does not apply within the shoreline area. I mean, that's what this says, right? I mean.
I don't think, I don't think that's.
That's, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm gonna have to, that's what I'll confirm with you for you.
Okay, well, that, that'd be good.
I'm sure we understand. Whether it's me or you, you can talk with your own kind of turn on this, because third ones would have to defend the whole thing.
Sally's buying for sure. I don't, I think, I understand we need all of our standard setbacks.
Right, so I'm just trying to think how the shoreline zone would affect anything, right?
Well, what, what it says is, the rules do not, A, B, C, D, and C is exempt an affordable housing development, a dwelling unit, accessory dwelling unit from the shoreline zoning requirements.
Does not exempt.
Right.
So it is allowed.
Do not exempt.
Right, means it's allowed. Those are not.
Yeah, so, you know, I think the intent was in the.
I think it is.
Was that this would not, this L D two thousand and three would not apply to the shoreline area.
I actually think that says.
But we need to know that. But we need to know that.
Yeah, that's what I'll confirm, but if it is, well, I...
No, so it just, it just says that they have to meet the shoreline zoning laws.
Right.
Right, both at the state and at the local level. So if locally, you do have, well, in the shoreline zone, you have to make sure you have one per unit, they can't get out of that because that is your local shoreline zoning rule.
But if you, if you, as long as you're seventy-five feet back from the water...
Well, I think it would get into like, I agree with that, all the setbacks, that's all pretty easy to meet. But I think where it would get you is like there's frontage requirements, right?
Water frontage.
And water frontage.
Yep.
Yeah.
And so, you'd like, you'd have to meet those.
They have to meet those.
And so like that would exempt most places on the water from having an accessory dwelling unit because they wouldn't have the frontage unless they had a water frontage for some reason.
And you would just have to clarify that as well. Like saying accessory dwelling units must still have all the waterfront, the upper dimensional requirements.
So to bring the pony back around to the state law, because we're not changing any shoreline zoning, this doesn't need to be reviewed by the state for shoreline zoning, correct?
We're not changing any of our, their land, yes. We can't make sure I covered that base or not.
We can't go less than what the state is, ever.
Right.
No, hardly what the state is.
But if we change something, if we change our shoreline zoning, it needs to be approved by the state before the town can approve it. Kind of like how the comp plan has to be approved by the state.
Yeah. Probably, yeah, I'm thinking, yeah, we don't need to go to the DEP with this unless we make some changes.
Can we make?
Actually, we may have to make some changes depending on how it pans.
It'll be a long journey, yeah.
Right.
But for now, at least with this, I will, I will ask about the... Because that was the last hour chance that I remember, I even talked with, I think it was, I remember talking to someone from DEP about LD two thousand three, and they said, yeah, we had to come in at last second and say, why on earth were we not going to talk this? And so that's what I'm gonna confirm.
So you think you're all done making notes now?
Well, I mean...
Understood, understood.
Unless there were some other changes to language that I have written down.
I do not. So we'll see you, next time we see you back, we'll be...
While I'm giving a presentation...
In regard to the, uh, in regard to the zoning requirements that you may start looking at in June or whatever, one of the things that we've talked about as a board for the last three years or so is this, to incorporate those sections of definite housing that was incorporated in twenty fifteen.
Yeah, okay.
If you wrote this in notes...
Yeah, no.
And I think all it would be is a couple more paragraphs to provide thirty percent ore and, you know, have it, you know, all the height and distance requirements.
Yeah, that's part of my work when doing the ordinance, I'm giving...
Well, the developers really seem to like it, and the shoreline, because the people are doing the thirty percent conversions and they would really like that as an option. I mean, we've heard it from a lot of the people that have come in for the thirty percent expansions, that they would like to see that in other towns that haven't, I mean, you know. Everybody seems to like it, the towns that...
When I'm doing the ordinance work, I'm gonna get the idea of what locally you want to see changed. And then I'm gonna make sure I also incorporate the state laws and changes that have happened with subdivision or shoreline zoning, other non-hazardism inducing housing related ones.
That would be the parking division.
Yeah, we're not on it, right?
Well, the LD actually says on this shoreline zoning thing, it says an accessory dwelling must comply with shoreline zoning requirements established by DEP and municipal shoreline zoning ordinances, so...
Right.
It doesn't, it does not, it doesn't say that you can't have it, it just says...
And that's really the conflict, because some towns would just say, you probably just point to your shoreline zone. Your shoreline, you'd say, well, we don't have accessory dwelling, it's listed on there, so it's not...
We gotta just look and see, like, for a forming lot.
And then we're gonna get the whole thing with...
Okay, you've done, you've done your job, let us all figure out.
I don't know.
Thank you very much.
I don't know.
So Max, you're gonna make those changes and bring that to us?
I will hopefully have them for you later this...
They'll send them to you, you will not be with us for next meeting.
No, I'm going now.
Right. So then, if the planning board decides they like it and it goes to the town attorney?
Yeah.
And then just gets sat on until the legislature says go. And if the planning board has changes to what you draw up, should, should it get kicked back to you? Down to you again?
No, I would say send it to the attorney as well, which is say, these are the changes planning board wants to make, because that can cause any conflict with LD two thousand three.
And then, because you have your finger on the pulse of the legislature, I assume you're just gonna let us know as things progress? If, if and when and how?
If the legislature decides to pass it delay at last minute, you don't need an email, you will hear me screaming hallelujah.
This is so...
And I'm sure we'll be here... So, so we can, I mean, I guess, so we're gonna send this out to the attorney for review and final sign-off. There's nothing that we want to implement unless LD two thousand three...
I mean, I think you, we're now approaching with the town, as you just mentioned earlier, had created all the documents sent in to their town, but we may want to hold on to attorney review.
Yeah, until we have it, I mean, I don't know if we're gonna actually fly it off to Sally unless we're sure we need it.
Right.
I agree.
I think so, too.
That, I mean, we've done...
I think there's a pretty good chance it would get pushed, right?
I, I mean, I have to believe...
Oh, I think so.
That has got to be here.
You know, it's...
Most pictures are linked to it. I just, I don't know if we want to send it. Because if we're gonna make edits in this, in our current ordinance to reflect LD two thousand three that we shouldn't do until we're going forward.
Yep.
We don't want to change the... So it's a fine, we're like walking a fine line right now, but the gut is, at least we've got it all done. So if it happens on July one, we could pop this off to Sally and have an emergency town meeting.
Right.
And in theory, we could have this, I mean, I, I, if, as we, because we're gonna have our comp plan back, so we go on the guise of heading into the deadline and our comp plan review is going hand in hand. We could always do that at, at the same time if this moves forward. And then only have one public meeting, I think is my suggestion.
Yeah, I think we should just kind of wait and see what happens, right?
I mean, you've done, you've done all of the work you need to do as a unit to, to write the language that you see appropriate.
So are we meeting next Tuesday?
I don't see that, I don't know what would really be...
You could do it via email, just see what he sent back.
Yeah, I don't see, I don't...
And that's the board's decision.
I don't see what we'd really end up doing.
In person.
Right.
So this, no?
I'd say no. We can vote on it, let's vote on it. Does anybody want to meet, meet next Tuesday? All in favor of meeting next Tuesday, say it. Do you think there's any need to, I don't know.
I was just wanting to know.
I mean, it can always be reviewed after the next regular meeting, since there seems to be no sense of urgency.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, you've accomplished what you want to accomplish, so...
I, I don't see, and...
Yeah, if you're going to a special town, you have to have them on Sunday morning.
Let me just make a motion to adjourn.
Alright, motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
All in favor? Thank you, Max, we appreciate it.
Yeah, I can.
You almost understand all this, we really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Excellent.
It's quite interesting, you know, I don't think it was fast.